Tuesday, July sixteenth at six fifteen. And the quarters on. All right. Tuesday, July sixteenth at six fifteen. We call the meeting to all. Uh, Lee Richards?
Yeah.
Shane Walker?
Here.
Greg Neves?
Here.
Randall Boswell?
Here.
Geraldine Walker?
Here.
All present. Need the motion to approve, uh, minutes from the last meeting of July tenth. Greg makes a motion, I hear second. Shane makes second, in discussion. All four say aye. All polls likewise. All. All four on that, all right. Um. We're looking at the two and three dollar raises that was passed down from the salary committee. Um. I know we're looking at appropriate resolution on that, but we need to look at the, uh, uh, this will drop down to the number six to look at the salary before we can do anything on the other. Um.
They've come up with a two.
They sent the two and the three over to the budget.
You say two dollars would be like eight percent coming?
It's, it's close.
Then you make a mo- well, I'll do that if we're looking at, I'll make a motion right now. And maybe when you get this, need to get this taken care of when the state comes in. I made the motion to, to put the, the two dollars, if it's raised eight percent, do an eight percent cost of living increase across the board for the county and then revisit these salaries. Uh, that is coming up right after, in, in August. After this thing passes through, everything, or for the good next fiscal year, September, and start going through that and, and work hard, get a desk audit on all these positions, get somebody in here that can tell us what these details are called for. Because like I said, I'm not smart enough to sit down and tell you what a billkeeper makes or what, uh, a share is, so, instead of two and three dollars. And that's, that's fair for everybody. We do it at eight percent across the board since the six percent next. And, and just be truthful, eight percent is probably closer to the cost of living increase that's going on with inflation right now, it's, it's in the six.
Two dollars is actually more than eight percent. The two dollars and eight percent are different.
Look at the top sheet.
It's a six percent.
A sixty-six percent. There, there's four calls, there's a six, a two, and an eight percent, and a third. Uh, she has wrote it down.
The six.
Uh, like that.
Okay, eight percent, one hundred and twenty cents.
The two dollars is a twenty-one percent. And the three dollars is a twenty-eight. The eight percent is a seven percent.
And Greg, am I correct in saying that when they do these audits, if these people are making more than what that audit says that they should make, then we can cut their pay back? Is that correct?
I'm definitely. We're so far in, we're so far in the scale, that haven't happened, that's why.
So.
Yeah, you could pay, theoretically, it'd be so. Then you need to come up with good job descriptions on here and, and make sure that you're meeting all the bullets on it. I mean, it's lining all your objectives on it, and. But yeah.
The only thing that scares me on the table is where the city's paying thirty on their officers and stuff. Uh, that's just on, I mean, I know.
We, we can, we can beat that all night, and I guarantee you that if we, if we went with the two or the eight percent, we, we'll, we'll lose, even with the three, we'll probably lose the weight. I, I mean, really.
That's true.
I mean, and, and I, and I can't blame them, can't blame them all. If you can make more money somewhere else, and, but this is all we can afford. I mean, that's, I would do the same thing if I had to defend, if I had to raise my family, I'm gonna go for it before they pay that. If it's not here, the, the good thing about here though is, is it's home in, it's convenient, um. It doesn't, it, it's, it's not as high paid. But, uh, it, it's not a high cost of living, it's going to naturally.
What if we sit down and revisit, uh, all of it and see exactly what we've got to have in our fund balance rate? And see if we can pull any more of it out to lower, to lower the taxes that we do have to.
I know the times, the costs keep kicking us right now, right?
I know.
We, we don't, we do not want the state to come in.
We don't.
But, and if, and if we keep kicking us down the road, we're, it, we're, the thirty-five percent will be a walk in the park.
But, we, we, the eight percent though, if we don't adjust the fund balance, will be probably more tax than the three dollars would if we adjust the fund balance.
We need some time, Greg, before the state comes in.
On the search.
If the state comes in, what would happen?
We could potentially have.
Or, or.
More.
Oh.
A lot more.
A lot more.
And if we don't set the budget, then they will set the budget. And we already looked stupid enough, we've been up here for, how many times, Simon?
Three, four.
A bunch.
Two, two twenty, two twenty-five looks, looks a lot better to me than the two thirty-five and the two thirty-eight.
Well, two twenty-five is the, the two dollar or the eight percent, that are in the same.
Six.
Eight percent raise on fifteen dollars ain't two dollars.
Six percent raise?
No. I mean, just, doesn't matter if it's eight percent or somebody is getting paid fifteen dollars, but I think a two dollar in there, that's, that ain't even close.
So if you look on page seven on the two dollar scale, look on page seven on the two dollar. That's where it runs down in dependence, though.
Two dollars.
Put it at two point two four, two four.
I mean, that's where everybody wants. We just gotta get this, we just gotta get it done.
Six percent.
What, if you.
My, my, my thing was just that the cost of living increase is fair.
For everybody. So you're, you're, you're saying two dollars?
He said eight percent.
Eight percent, well, we agree with it. I do.
Go back and tell you the specifics on your salary scale and then.
Eight percent, eight percent.
Figure fourteen dollars on that same.
Okay, nineteen dollars.
Eight percent on fifteen dollars. It'll take fourteen.
Dollar fifty-two. On a nineteen, if you can take nineteen.
It'll take fourteen percent at fifteen dollars to reach fifty-dollar average.
If you make nine dollars, nineteen dollars an hour, uh, eight percent, you can get a dollar and a half rate, a dollar fifty-two.
We, we've got a lot making fourteen dollars an hour. Thirteen.
Fifteen pretty much, now, you take fourteen times eight, eight percent.
Dollar.
Ten dollars twelve cents. Yeah, that'd be a dollar cent. Guys, we're trying to have a meeting, we cannot hear each other, please. Like a clerk makes thirteen twenty-five.
Hello. Starting out, um, and that's like any office when they first start out is thirteen twenty-five.
I mean, you got plenty of clerks down there, been here four and five years, and you're still making the same amount they got hired.
They get a one percent. I can prove it. I don't, I don't know what's eight percent, but I just wanna see what eight percent. At twenty-one, at twenty-one dollars, you get a dollar sixty-eight.
Twenty-five cents, we're saying. Dollar forty-three, fifteen.
Just wanna look over. Of course, that's not adding the one percent. But what if, what if we done run the two and the three without the one percent? For this year, that would give, I mean, one percent raise there is crazy, we could give one that every year. But, uh. We'll find and see if we can, could take any more out of fund balance to get us down, get us still in the percentage we've got to have. Thirty, and we can make it in thirty, and we'd have the time to make thirty if everybody could make thirty on both of them to, to save.
Can you finish that? Make, finish it.
What would eight percent raise up, fourteen dollars and ten cents? That's where our EMTs, fourteen ten.
Dollar twenty.
Sixteen, fourteen.
Dollar twelve.
Almost a dollar twenty.
We've a dollar twelve point eight. We're having to hire drivers, 'cause we can't hire the EMTs. What do you think?
Well, I, I'd like to get it done, but I don't. I know somebody said, well, you know, that we just sit up here on our hind end and don't ever do nothing. I'm sorry, but I have a job and I work every day, twelve hour shift, so. And every day that I come up here, I'm having to take time off from that job and get somebody to cover for me to do this. I'm sorry, I, I take this serious. So I'm not just sitting on my hind end, just over by my desk. But we do have to set a budget, because or the state's gonna come in and they're gonna set it for us, and it ain't gonna be free. I mean, if y'all are mad now, it will do you no good to get mad at them. So, I'm sorry, we've got to do this.
I know you've got to do it.
We have to set.
So what do you, what would be the, what would be the option if it's settled?
Well, the salary committee, committee sent us the two dollar and the three dollar one, was the ones that they passed on to us, to vote on tonight.
And which one are you saying, two or three?
Well, the way I heard it is they passed on the two or three or whatever you thought was appropriate, and I'm stuck with that. All I wanna know is why we are not doing budget cuts across the board, every department head, why aren't we doing anything to cut costs instead of balancing this salary? And no problem with the cost of living, but why is it constantly getting balanced on the backs of the property owners? That's my question, so. Yeah, I'm just saying, I mean, I, I'm fine with the cost of living, but why isn't it coming out of the general fund? Why isn't the money, where did it go?
You want me to explain the thirty, uh, thirty percent, why it was explained to me? Thirty percent of property owners, and then there's forty percent that are twenty-one and under, and then the other thirty percent are the spouses of that said property owner. That makes up a hundred percent. There's a hundred percent of people that own property in Overton County. No. This needs, please, you should jump into conclusion and there's thirty percent of property owners. Now, there are some renters, but every, every, every acre of Overton County is owned by somebody. Thirty percent. Thirty percent is, the way it was explained to me, thirty percent is property owners, forty percent are twenty-one and under, and the other thirty percent is the spouses of the first thirty percent. That's the way it was explained to me.
Hey, wait, don't, we're getting all stuck here, let them figure this out.
Guys, please.
If y'all pick seven, nine, or two.
We'll take your questions after the meeting, let's get into this. What, what if, what if we go with the two percent or the two dollars?
No.
With the one percent?
Eight percent.
Eight percent.
Eight percent.
Eight percent was not sent over to us by the salary committee. If the two dollars and the three dollars were sent over to us by the.
What salary committee is that?
In the way we're, if we can find cuts, the lower it's.
What's the total in that company on two dollars?
Where any, just call them, let them pay. And then on. The two dollars, if you go with the two dollars, thanks Sam. You had that question of the total. Four year ago, it was two twenty-five? Yeah. If we dropped from fifteen to five hundred dollars ninety-seven, we dropped to one ninety-seven, so it'll bring it in right back up to what it was five years ago, or four years ago.
Six percent twenty-two.
Four year ago.
Uh, from two thousand fifteen to two thousand twenty, the tax rate was two point two five.
But they dropped back four years, we're at. They dropped it because of COVID, if I'm not mistaken. If, the Friday. If we could. Greg, pardon? If we could do the two dollars and then maybe go back through and see if there's anywhere we can cut, that we might have to get it down even lower than the two twenty-four.
When was the last time you ever turned away a pack?
I'm, I'm a boy of people.
We're right here, right here, okay? We're trying to. Ah, you're fine, you're fine.
Can you go back and get all the, ours, your ten percent cut on all their budgets? And that would, that's a hundred thousand, that's a thousand dollars, each department.
And one eight percent? We gotta have the maintenance of effort, sorry.
Yeah, we can't.
You can't cut, you can't do anything less than what they got last. Some of them you can't do.
But most of the departments don't have a.
No, the ones, you get the, well, you got the, you got that maintenance effort on the, uh, nine one one, maintenance effort on the chief's department, library, um.
Election.
Election.
Governor of elections.
True.
We'll look in there and see, uh, what's a convenience that not, that we don't have to have.
On the appraisals that's coming in from the state, like, there was a lady called me today and she said, her daughter bought her letter from Caribou and her taxes was gonna go from seven hundred to thirteen hundred. Does that some money that the state appraises it for, does that go in to the county or does the state?
I don't know, I hadn't heard of the, the letter, I, I don't know. I can say the letter, but if it's Caribou's office, it goes, that's his property taxes.
But if, when the state's doing their reappraising, does that money, when the state reappraises you, does that not go to the county?
Yes, and that's whenever, everything will be leveled out across the board.
But are you taking all that into consideration? It just does.
We're, we're saying what we have to have this year, now it could, it could possibly go down next year when the state comes in. It could, but it could, it's my thoughts, I, I don't know what the state's gonna come in and say that we have to. I, I don't. I don't know what they're gonna do, but I know that they do a twenty-five percent of county every year, so by the time that the state comes in, it's not as big as it was. They level it all out to a hundred percent. Um, it's, it's a, it's a process that, like businesses and, and they are only paying within sixty-something percent by now. So when the state comes in, they'll make them pay a hundred percent, they'll make us pay a little bit back. We're still doing that twenty-five percent thing, but they'll make sure that your house appraises it for.
Let's just do the. If they didn't, if they don't give us the two and the three dollars from the salary committee, I'll, I'll make a motion to do the, the two dollars, you know?
With or without the one percent.
It says with one percent. With one percent, that's, that's two twenty, that's two twenty-four, that's right, right, two, two five, like it was in two twenty-twenty-five. But we still need to, I mean, twenty-twenty, but we still need to revisit the salaries next year and with the budget, uh, desk audit, and make, make sure that we're aligned.
Now, CTS will come in and do a salary study.
Well, we need to do that.
Yeah.
Uh, we need to do that.
I don't know how much it costs, but it's done through BTE, um, but they, they'll come in, I don't know how long it takes. We need to step the request.
Usually not, come to get, what's on the grad students from like university, doc school comes in, does stuff like that.
Uh, uh, or do, it, it'll cost money.
Salaries, salaries, he has salaries on the description and the content of the work.
Yeah, they won't do, uh, a desk audit, they'll do a salary audit. Like what the job should pay, they ain't gonna come in and say what the job should do. Seven, seven. What the job can do.
Well, you gotta have it.
We have, we have a job description when we hire somebody, this is your job description. And, and so they'll go by that job description and they'll determine what it should be. That's what they do. But I don't, I don't, they'll charge something, but I don't know how much. That's what your motion was. Yeah, that's what you're challenging.
But what, what, we need to get this, I'll get that, don't you agree?
I agree. You need to say. But the whole, the whole commission wants to look at it before they go forward. So we need to get all them together to look at it. Uh, if you're doing a special, uh, let's see, doing a work session, uh, for them to go back through, uh, I think it's five days, if I'm not mistaken. If it's for the whole commission. Oh, that is special call. So, uh, it's just for them to go over and look over the budget again. Should we do that thirty now? That's forty-eight hours, and so. Now, so you can hold off this thing and remain with the whole commission.
Let's just do it, let's just do it tonight, get it done with.
We've got a meeting of. Okay, we're, we're saying different things. We got a motion, I agree. Uh, for two dollars and revisit next year and do a audit. Is that what your, the motion was, that our salary, salary committee?
We need to do a desk audit on these positions.
My two dollars revisit. But that, that you motion, I'll say.
I'm not real playing for the two dollar one right now, but that's all they give us on it. And, and it's just, uh.
Wait, send it back.
It only, it only, it only gives, it's only one of those, so it's, it's not one of five of any.
Well, maybe, maybe we can find that somewhere, that, that's a more of a. Where is that? We're going, did you put, the desk audit in your motion? Yeah, I got it in here. The salary study.
I'll say, Greg, your motion, I'll just, the desk audit.
I put salary study. That's what.
The salary study, that's all it's saying. The, the, the salary study, desk audit. There's some, somebody needs to come in and look at these decisions.
Okay, Greg made a motion, Randall said, can, any other discussion on it?
Is that part that was brought up the last week about cutting the, what was given to nine one one, is that that's included in this, or that included?
I don't.
Um, in the budget, when, when I was doing it, I, I had estimated to about fifty thousand dollars, where those increases were about fifty.
Nine.
And then, um, I think they come back and then the number was either fifty-three or fifty.
But that was one three dollar.
Oh, maybe three thousand, so I, right now, I think I have fifty.
Okay.
So it does give me.
If they have a.
They're already, they're already, they're already giving a dollar.
And.
Dollar.
And it's given, it's given the highway, given the highway department a dollar. Is that giving the highway a dollar?
Yeah. And, and that would you? Nine one one, catch up with it. Did we think the same, did we think the same? That, that's, that's all right.
Okay, any other discussion? All right, another other discussion being, I had, uh, Geraldine Walker?
Yes.
Randall Boswell?
Yes.
Greg Neves?
Yes.
Shane Walker? You can vote on the whole budget, you just can't vote on just single, uh, where you're at. You can vote on the whole budget. This is a whole salary. Just salary?
This is just salary.
Yeah, this is salary.
Well, I, I understand, I'll take you past, I'm sorry. Uh, Shane passed, due to conflict, Lee Richards? Lee?
No, he's saying it.
Oh, he's saying it, sorry.
I'm not even sure what you voted on.
Yeah, yeah. The salary, the two dollars.
How much? Yeah, how much?
How much? The motion was made, it's explained.
We, we can't hear that yet.
Yeah, they'll make it here by holding the mic.
Yeah, we're required to listen a little better.
So the motion on the table, the two dollar raise, the visit next year with the salary study.
Somebody making fourteen dollars an hour, getting, uh, the two dollar an hour raise you proposed and just passed, just got a fourteen point two five percent raise.
Five eight percent.
But the same two dollar an hour raise, for somebody to make it twenty dollars an hour, is not gonna be that fourteen point two five percent. So it is not fair, which is what you were going for, what you were truly.
Going back. We're going back. We're moving on, we're having this meeting. Uh, he, he voted yes. Uh, so Shane passed, all others yes. And then we are going to, we, we are going to this. But we can't, that's what I'm saying, we're not trying to, we can't. Or do we have it in this bag? So if you get your two dollar package. Yeah. We get your two dollar package. There is a resolution, appropriating resolution in twenty twenty-four dash zero eight one two dash oh one. Okay?
What page?
If, in this segment, that should be your, uh, two through six. Then your tax levy would be on page seven, I do believe. Then it'll go, uh, seven and eight, and then the next is your nonprofit resolution. Now, if, uh. This is your nonprofit. So. If we're meeting because of our slacks, we don't need to approve it all here. That's the thing, if we prove it, it's set, when we go to prove it for the next, we're not meeting the slacks, if there's any cuts, we make. The full committee, the full court wanted to meet and look at it before we made a final decision. Everybody wanted, everybody wanted to get together, they're right on.
I think it's only fair that every commission has a right to know what we done, what we done and what y'all done, I think it's only fair.
So we got, we can't do, we can't approve unless we, uh, pass it on to the full committee for final decision before going to the court. When you make a motion to do that, if you think that there's any other places in here that can be cut, or you want to go through and, and look to see for something. So we can make a motion to send it to the full committee for final decision, if that's what you want it to do. That wouldn't be approving anything out, we sending it to the full committee for final approval before moving forward. I mean, yeah, the proof, the, the. One part, this will be the whole budget, this will be the whole.
Where's the other one?
Yeah, at some point, we need a vote. That's what, I know we're trying to get it all done today, but if you want the full commission to meet, if you approve it here. If they want to make cuts or changes, uh, we can do a contingency upon the full court's approval, I guess.
Well, I thought that's what the full meeting was going to be about.
Really?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, we can send it over to them for the final decision, and then we'll have to have the.
Our finally mon, I mean, our monthly meeting, right? This is, all we're going to send it to the full commission.
That's it.
Right now.
The, they want, they want all commissioners to get together before, before it goes to final court.
Personally, uh, I would want to go through it if I went on that committee.
Yeah, but we have work sessions up.
Just do a work session with the other five, there's five more commissioners that's not safe.
Yens all met for two days for the final decision on the slices and cuts, that's what Greg's trying to say, yens, everybody's already looked at it.
Remember, we went through it first, first time.
Well, Jay's not here, or not very, but, uh, Gail's not here, uh, there's four or five, Jacey's not here, uh, I don't know who else is not here, but. But I, I feel like they deserve to know what we done.
Is eight percent off the table?
There was on the table.
Can we just talk about it for an hour? Yeah, you made a motion for it.
We gotta get something started. I mean, we, you guys, we.
Well, you can just make it up till tomorrow night, and then call those other commissioners and, and do a work session.
They haven't run.
I think the payrolls have meeting about you guys, yens, if you continue the meeting. They don't have a board, they won't have a vote, it's a budget committee.
Guys, we don't, if we don't quit beating the dead horse, this is.
We made it for two days to go over the slacks, the slicing part. And everybody approved the three dollars, so the only thing that's changed is going from three to two, so it's actually went down. So you, you met on the tenth and eleventh.
Why do we let you, we can't vote on?
And then, the tenth, you voted down the three dollar raise. Uh, June. Oh, four, yeah. June tenth and eleventh, you had work sessions with all the commissioners, and July the eleventh, you came in and done the slicing. So yens have already done that part of it.
Well, that's when that, before all that made up, moved around to take the lawsuit.
Mr. Nick, what do you think for a rate?
Eight percent, that's too much, really.
What do you think for a rate?
I was for the eight percent, not the other.
McDonald's, what do you think for a rate?
Well, we can't do that.
How come you didn't back on the eight percent more?
It's eight percent.
They didn't give us that option.
It's two dollars or three dollars, that's all there is.
Keep going, let's get it back before we revisit.
They said.
Because we don't have no pickers on nature.
Big part of what you consider.
I know what we need to operate, um, that's fair to the employees and fair to the people, but I've got to entertain employees. Because it's not fair on the employees that can ask that, when there's ninety-eight open shifts and only forty-eight being filled, and then they're having, uh, medics working.
So there's missing reconvening tomorrow night?
So, down and stout, uh, it's. They need help back, and if you think, if you think.
Let's, let's, let's move on to the next, we didn't vote on the end.
Stephen, do you know what they start out at, down, down Vic's office and Boone and all them?
Yeah, that's where I was talking about, but.
It's thirteen fifty and that.
Yeah.
And I'm not for real sure what it pops out at, because they get that one percent every year, they're getting raises every year. And, and Connor's office over there, they, he's got a bookkeeper and a top man. And. Manager, yeah, and they get paid higher than a normal employee would.
It's about fourteen.
And then the sheriff's department starts to see those out at thirteen fifty.
Fourteen fifteen percent.
And then they go on up. They get raises and go up, I'm not sure about Shane's, they.
They're saying one, everybody gets a one percent besides the high.
Now, what's your starting?
Fourteen.
Fourteen.
Fourteen, fourteen tens.
Yeah, we didn't have time to get on our names.
Okay, like you said, everybody had to have the three dollar an hour raise, but now you understand too, because the state literally, if you go back, has to treat everybody the same.
No, I said, they said it had to be the same.
The same, yeah, okay, but the agents are saying we need to call somebody in and let them, you know, evaluate and everything, so why, if it's that way now, why, why call somebody in to evaluate?
That's just what she told me.
So if they come in and do that evaluation of each person's job and they decide, okay, everybody's making one service, this might be too much. Do they go back in and cut that pay and then direct the money somewhere else?
Yeah, we, we pay so, we pay so little right now.
We need to, we need to move forward.
But reverse can happen, and they say they're making too little, then we are sitting here again and we have to give them that money. So if we go through a review and we say our county is paying too little, they deserve this, we gotta make up that money, us taxpayers, to pay those people the wrong rate, so it's a catch twenty-two.
Greg, we need to move forward, make the decision.
That's a catch twenty-two, we really don't know what they should be paying, because we would be applicable to.
Plus the one percent?
When we do the eight? We got, we got this one day. Nothing, but we're gonna see if we can. We're gonna move to the full commission, two days. Forty-eight hour notice, that was in one day, move this on to the full commission for a work session. Budget committee will continue this over, budget committee will have a vote. If yens continue up, and we can do that, but if you want it to move towards a work session for the full committee, it has to be forty-eight hours. But then we'll have to have it done. Because then the tax levy has got to run in the paper for ten days, and that'll put. That'll put us, where, where a court session is approved. Second Monday of. August is.
Twelve.
The twelfth.
It's not till August twelfth.
So we'll have to have it in the paper.
In ten, ten days.
Next week.
Two weeks.
Two weeks. Well, we're down to them, we're down to the last.
Is eight percent off the table?
Yes.
Why is it off the table, could someone explain that?
Because they voted it down, they voted to come with the, to the budget for two dollars and two dollars salary.
They read it, the salaries didn't have the eight percent, they had six percent and ten three percent, we didn't have eight percent. All right, we're gonna move forward, we made a decision, we'll move forward, uh, approving the following, uh, operations with a contingency and approval of the full court. Uh, we can meet with a work session on Thursday. That works, that's forty-eight hours. At seven o'clock, we'll have to get moving to do that. Seven P M, forty-eight hours, seven.
That's from the rest.
That's to finish it out, if you approve this now, send it for a final decision.
I'll be out of town that night, so.
Stay right down.
I'll be out of town.
We move forward. I, we, I mean, we're coming to the last of the meetings, and we need, I mean, one person out of town, another person out of town, we wait until everybody's out here, we're two weeks out.
You're more than welcome to, I'm just telling y'all, I don't want to have none of them, I mean, I don't want to do that.
Okay, I just want to make fire in their volume, I just want to make fire. So the motion is. To approve the following.
So there's another meeting Thursday?
Right now, we're just approving, and it'll go to the full court.
And this is on number five?
Number four.
Of four. Tax, the tax levy will be two, two, four, two, 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 four.
What, what would be if we were looking, if we were looking at, it wouldn't be, it wouldn't take it over a cent and a half. Because you got six percent. Twenty-two is old papers. Randall, the, the motion that was made, sent over to us with the. We passed the two. So this was with the two dollar raise, with the passing of.
It was two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, two dollars on one percent.
I mean, wouldn't run the, go back, I mean, this, this is, he can't be here more than I can be, I don't even work. But he said he would be here Thursday. Don't think he'd be here Thursday, leave me in your post. Everybody's mad, everybody's done slacking, it's one take. We gotta have, we gotta have some interest. We gotta have some interest. All right. Could I have a question, please, just one thing? Yes. I'd just like to know, you know, like, the first committee I was in, I'm David Sather, by the way, I'm not running for office, I'm far away. Uh, first committee, and I thought was, was decide what was two, two or three, send up two, you voted on yes or no, or two, well, they kicked the can, two and three. And I thought Greg made a great deal starting out, hey, that's what we're here for, let's vote, vote for the second, and now you got the second, now you're moving it on, on down to somebody else another night, what, what are y'all, what are you here for?
Well, they said two or three or whatever they decided on, so to me, that gives them the right.
We both done the, hang on, this, this is what was on the table, they sent over two or three, we both done the two, and we're trying to move. We voted, and they accepted the two dollars, and now we're voting on making a motion to move it on to full court. Because there's a lot of committees that, they wanted to meet with the full commission to look at it, but they raised, don't know a person here, a person there. So we, they met last month and slashed this budget already, the only thing that's changed was the two dollars versus three dollars. And taking that million dollars out of the fund balance to have cover that lawsuit, that dropped it down. And so that's, that's what it is, I, I care.
Where does it begin, and here?
This is what, we're trying to end it here to move it to full court, that's what, we're trying to get a motion on the table, to take it.
Stephen, if you're having to wait on everybody to get together once to do that, is all this gonna be able to be done?
We're ending it now, we're ending it now, to send it to full court, we have to wait on it to full court. We're ending all meetings right now, we're sending it forward. It's either, it's either this or the state comes and does, whichever. Four, we're, that's the motion that's on the table right now.
Before you vote, can I ask one question?
Yes.
And it's actually taken nothing to you, you know, I ain't gonna do that. When y'all bought and voted, he brought this proposition in by the sex drawing, I talked to ten out of the fifteen commissioners, indirectly all did vote for it. But ever since then, everybody wanted to reset it, they've been against it, I didn't say, I said, yeah, I was good thinking. And, but this whole deal is bought, we're still saying can't be, took back. A dollar raise of that budget, put an auction sign up, resell it. Why can't nobody make a motion to turn around and resell it, everybody wants to blame them on buying it, everybody said it was shady, the meeting was out, put it in the budget, turn it and sell it. I know for the other five sitting at this table says they're against it, make the motion to resell it. I know for the other five sitting at this table says they're against it, make the motion to resell it, there's an extra dollar of that raise if it brings within eighty percent of what it was paid for. You wanna talk about deficits and stuff and work full time? Why ain't we talking about the health of the room?
We're on this, and then this, why don't we make a motion?
He just made a motion.
He can't stay with the agenda. The budget commission make a motion to take the vote, you got a table at any point.
Your body are still making.
But this is, here's. The motion on the table is to approve and move to full court, do I have a second? I thought Greg made the motion.
I'll say it.
Who made the motion?
Greg made the motion, I need a second.
I made a motion.
Randall said.
Thought we voted on this.
No, we're doing.
Yeah, I thought we were voting.
Oh, okay, yeah, I'll make a motion.
All right. Lee Regis?
We're saying send it to the full court, no work session, the full court.
Send it to full court.
We've had work sessions.
We, we've had the work session. Full, Lee Regis?
Yes.
Shane Walker? This is for the whole budget. Greg made the motion, Randall said.
To say that that rate, is that what it is?
Yeah. All right, uh, Geraldine Walker?
Yes.
Randall Bowles?
Yeah.
All right, motion passed.
That's to send it to full court, that's not vote.
To send it to full court. All right, the, uh, number five, general fund one oh one, courthouse fund one twelve, solid waste fund one sixteen, drug fund one twenty-two, American Rescue Plan Fund one twenty-seven, highway fund one thirty-one, general purpose school fund one forty-one, federal projects fund one forty-two, central cafeteria fund one forty-three, debt service fund one fifty-one, education debt service fund one fifty-six, education capital project fund one seventy-seven, capital project fund one seventy-eight, capital project fund one seventy-nine, Oakland County Health and Rehab, and Overton Ticket nine one, these are those, uh, following budgets. They should be the rest of those pages. And what was that, page thirty-two on?
Quick question on the cafeteria fund, what all is that funding? Is that funding the child's, all the child's food, drink?
They, uh.
They get free lunch.
Yes, it is, because we are one of the poorest counties in Tennessee, and you are tagging us with nineteen percent taxing.
So all statements are out, do you have any lunch?
Yes.
Bill, let me pass that up.
Left motion.
I'll say it.
No, I didn't move. Randall made a motion, Greg said. Geraldine Walker?
Yes.
Randall Bowles?
Yes.
Greg Nevin?
Yes.
Shane Walker? Lee Regis? So, uh, home real call, motion passed. Uh, Lee's known. Uh, any new real business?
Yes, make a motion to put that additional five acres that we bought up for sale.
I say.
Yes.
You want to keep five acres?
We're not.
You signed the contract.
We've not paid for it, the contract's signed, it's under contingency, we, we're, they're doing the, uh, praises and stuff right now. We can't do anything, that's what I'm trying to explain. Any other, we'll revisit that a later date, any other? Kids next meeting, is that being determined? Yeah, they, they don't, they, they mouse into the journal. Next meeting. Next meeting will be August twelfth. So, so the journal is. Randall said, all four say aye.